We do have copies of our agenda up front. If you'd like to have a copy, we can get you one up here on the table. Today is Monday, September 25th, and I've got 4:31 now. First, we'll be conducting a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, we'll be adjourning and going to a combined work session and call meeting. We've got some matters of business that need to be taken care of tonight that cannot wait until next Monday, which is normally... The first Monday of each month is our normal, regular commission voting meeting. So we're going to be in a combined work session. So during that time, we'll be discussing matters, as well as I'll be asking the board if there's any wishes to, one way or another, on whatever each of the agenda items, to take care of those items as we proceed forward. So bear with us, and I'll try to move us along as efficiently as possible. Moving on first, our public hearing. Item one on our agenda. Conduct a public hearing for the application filed by Mr. Mark Byrd to redistrict property located at 36 Cannon Road, Cleveland, Georgia, 30528. From a C1 community commercial district to a C2 highway business district, total acres to be changed is 3.506 acres as tax parcel 076-130. And then we'll conduct a public hearing. And I've got some questions on why these are split up in the first place, but the application filed by Mr. Mark Byrd to redistrict property located as well, 36 Cannon Road, from C1 to C2. And that particular parcel is a total acres of 1.82 acres, and that's tax parcel 076-130A is in that. So to begin with, I'm going to ask staff, Mr. Melton, you, Mr. Self, who's going to be presenting?
After Gordon is going to present.
There you are. Harry, come on down. You're the next contestant. Good afternoon.
Want us to put it down?
Yeah.
My name is Harry Barton. And one of your questions you had this term was, the reason we have two applications is two different separate parcels. And that's the reason, both of them are separate parcels, not one parcel together. There's a 1.85 and 3.50. So we had to file separate applications because there are separate parcels. At the last meeting, the board of planning, I'll cover that, if you like, or you may cover the...
This is what the application wants, what he's wanting to do, and the action taken, the recommendation from the planning board on number one, and then number two. And I'll ask the board to ask you any questions. And I'm aware that you have to get to a planning commission meeting in a little bit, so I'll release you to run up there, and then I'll have Mr. Byrd give his synopsis of the transaction. And then I'll open the floor up for those in support of the applicant, as well as anyone who is here in opposition to the application. So go ahead, Harry.
The first application will be a 3.506 application for land use change from C1, which is community commercial, to C2, which is highway business. Mr. Byrd and I had conversations several weeks or months earlier, and appeared that the right, the route to go to get where he needs to be would be to have a land use change. With that, for the board of planning, at their hearing, it's a 3.5 acre tract adjoining to Cannon Street off of Duncan Bridge, which is very close to the intersection of 115 and Duncan Bridge. It currently has a one-story frame, is that right, Mr. Byrd? One-story frame on it now. It's the back portion of the other tract. They do adjoin each other. They had a public hearing with the board of planning in that meeting, and then our last public commission meeting, they voted not to recommend to the board of commissioners to approve the request of land use change on that.
Now, that's the 1.82 acres?
No, the 3.506.
Okay.
We're doing 3.506. They voted not to recommend, as I said, change for that tract. The other tract is a 1.82, is a current tract. The current has buildings and structures on it now, which is in the application, and Mr. Byrd is planning to place another structure. Is that correct, Mr. Byrd? Along with another storage building, along with an office?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and get 1.82 acres for those. That actually is, that is also on Cannon Road and Duncan Bridge Road, that intersection for those. And part of this was, to meet the criteria in the C2, he was not going to be a setback to place the second building, because the setbacks are greater for the conditional type use than would be for the C2 use. That one, the board of planning did recommend to the board of commissioners to consider approving that land use change to that tract.
Okay, just a point of clarification. The 1.82, the planning commission did approve as presented with the set facts as presented on the application, correct?
They approved, what they did, they voted to recommend to the board of commissioners to approve his application for, to go from a C1 community commercial to a C2 highway business. Setbacks didn't anything to do with that portion of him, Mr. Chairman. The reason he looked at going to C2 was that setbacks for his proposal on the 1.82 couldn't meet the setbacks for the 1.82. That's why he's asking to go to the C2 portion of C1, allow further setbacks than he can meet. Is that correct, Mr. Byrd?
Well, that and the zoning.
Well, yeah. With that zoning and conditional use, he couldn't meet that setback to place the building in the C1 area, community commercial, because the setbacks are larger in a conditional use for that.
But your zoning will not let you build a building bigger than 500.
That was part, that was other part of two square feet of the size, too, there.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Harry?
On that one, is this one, it should have been a C2 instead of a C1, because you know, we're catching a few like last one.
We're getting some of those.
This is a big commercial, so I know big things.
Yeah, and it's, it's some of those we've gotten from some of those, this is a community commercial. And the community commercial is only allowed for this in the district as a conditional use.
In a C1.
In a C1.
It's in a C1.
The highway business does allow for, does allow for this type of building in a C2 highway business type district, and we have some of them that we've had. For part of those records were just simply, you know...
To answer Commissioner Bryant's question, I think the answer probably is yes, and probably should.
Being prior existing properties, that was.
It would have fell under a C2, rather than it fell under a C1. How long these storage buildings been here? Twenty years?
Yeah, they've been there a long time. I know that for sure.
Nothing has changed about the way it's been, it's the same road, it's been used all this time.
My understanding, Cannon Road is still the same road they have on that one, but that's, you know, I remember when the gentleman built them many moons ago.
All right. We'll give Mr. Byrd an opportunity. All right, Harry, if you'll take a seat for just a minute before I let you go up there. Mr. Byrd, or Mr. Sherrill, I don't know. Thank you. You're good. We share. All right. Mr. Byrd, you are the owner of the property, owner of the property in record. Give us a synopsis, what you got here.
Okay, I'm Mark Byrd. I've got, when I bought this, I bought it, and I bought the piece behind it in addition to put them together, but not put them together because of banks now. You know, if anybody knows how 2011 was. I didn't put them together because if I needed to borrow money, I'd borrow it on the mini stores, not on the house. But anyway, so I didn't put them together thinking it wouldn't be no big deal. So I tried, I bought them both to try to make storages there. And I've had them since 2011.
Okay, you're looking to place an office on the front parcel?
Yes, sir. There are one there now that has no restroom in it, but the lady that I've got working there lives close, and it's worked out good.
Now, the office is considered, the doors open during the day?
That's all.
I'm saying that's, that's the office?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Okay. All right. Office will be, you got your front three, then your back two, your offices in the back two, but this one right here.
The new building, the new back.
Well, I'm talking about the office.
Oh, yes, sir.
The office.
The office is going to be in this, in this right here?
Well, it's already there. It's in there now.
It's just...
Okay. And for the record, what size building are you going to build in this section?
Not very.
Okay. Mr. Sherrill, do you happen to know?
Yeah.
The size? The new building in the front? This one right here, this?
The new building, it's not as big as this one. It's similar, I saw a proposed plan or something.
It's in here, so it should be in the title paper.
I touched on it like you had before we dropped.
It is the same as this right here.
Okay.
It's another one right, mirrors that. It does, with parking that comes down between them.
All right. Is everyone required for trial?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Go back to the podium, so I can make sure I get everything on sound system for everybody with my ear. All right. The back parcel, I call the front parcel, back parcel. The back parcel. Long-range plans there, step one, step two, any more buildings, how many more over the next five, 10 years, what's your plan? And I'm getting deeper into weeds here, but just curious.
Well, it's just whatever the demand is, you know, because one good thing about the storage is you can add them as the demand, and whatever fits there, you know. It could be, yeah, it could be five years out, you know. Because I've been there, well, say, eleven, seven, so I've been there six years on this now, trying to get where I can add on.
So you want, you're wanting to change this to C2 so that you can add on?
Yes, sir. I thought it'd just be easy to do it all.
One of the issues, Mr. Chairman, is if both properties need to be, need to go together, be the same zoning, because we could have, we need the ability to, septic is, is an issue, or could become an issue. So when we go to install our septic, if we have to add to the property, we create an issue where now we have a property that's of a different zoning that we can't add to the property that we have there on the front. So we need that ability to be able to move that line if we have to, at the least.
Help me understand, if you get it, and you can decide four years down the road, you want to buy, build 10 more, so you're going to put a bathroom back there, too? Is that, am I understanding you right? I mean, because you're fixing a builder, it's a new building with a bathroom now, right? So why can't you not plan that in? I mean, if it's all incorporated in one section, eventually...
I can't plan what I don't know.
I understand. But, okay, that's why, that's why I ask you.
Sure.
You know. So Cannon Road, you just have an easement going down that property, is that right? Correct, sir?
The primary lines in Center Road.
It's been a while since I've been down there. How many houses on the left between, I call it 1.8 and 1.00, be to your end of your line?
On the left, you got Mr. Cannon, he's on the one on the left, and then you got some of them way back there in the very back, and then you got Mr. Thomas, he's got some land back there in the timber people.
I have one more question, Mr. Byrd. Have you not, I mean, we've gone down the seasons before over the years, and I'm not saying badly either way, I'm just asking, is there no way to keep the dust and the way that road is and the traffic's going to be in there, that you can not get another driveway easement on your property off Duncan Bridge and run straight down on the side and access your property? On your property without having to go down that road with the traffic and the stirrup on that?
Not the way the buildings are laid, already built.
The way he acquired them, there's no way to design adequate access off of Duncan Bridge and get the 24-foot paving needed for commercial entrance. If we did a commercial entrance, you know, there's, there's extensive design requirements there.
But I have put melons on the road to cut down the dust.
I'll just put the question.
Well, I don't know.
I'm going to make a comment, and it's actually going to be a kind of a segue, because I'm aware, I'm aware that we have folks here in opposition of the application. And I'm going to impose the answer, and you've already alluded to your answer, and they're going to have an opportunity to answer their side as well. You know, like Commissioner Bryant was just talking about, one of the questions, I have the properties access to easement, or do both park properties, do they go to the center line? And if so, do they have a boundary line agreement? Is there, I'm kind of doubting there's a boundary line agreement between yourselves and the Cannons. I'm kind of doubt that.
So if I may interject and say that, as far as a rezoning request, property line issues are irrelevant to what you should be deciding on. If the, I surveyed the property, I have an opinion of where I think the property historically has been. The other owner may have a difference of opinion, but it doesn't negate, it's irrelevant and immaterial to the question before you on rezoning of a piece of property.
That's correct to a point, but then when you get 50 cars going down there, you're three out instead of 10.
Well, if you want to talk about density, you know, along easement, but the easement agreement in place now is for commercial use, because that's what the use is.
Yeah, but just, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, I mean, up to the top. So now, you're going to go down here, and you're going to build some more adjacent, so they're going to have to get down there somewhere unless you're going to access, if I'm understanding it right, at the top, where it's at now, and you're going to run parallel and go down to access this.
Absolutely.
So that's what you're, that's what I'm trying to get up to, I mean, are you going to use that whole Cannon Road all the way to the point and come out with another entrance down here versus one at the top, or are you going to access it, the same spot it's going in, and just keep building it on down? Because you keep speaking about in the future enough, and you know, I understand that, but when you get it zoned, it sells, and then something else comes on, and I have to build one back on down the road. I'm not getting on you, I'm just trying to...
No, no, I follow you. I think that rather than it being a zoning issue, it is a design, it is a design issue. It is certainly something that your planning department should contemplate as to density. What is the density of a commercial piece of property? I could tell you what the density would be if it were an office complex, retail, multifamily housing. I can give you numbers to that. You know, your ordinance needs to contemplate what, what is that density? What is day, is it so much day traffic you don't want on this easement?
No, I'm just asking a question. I mean, how many, I'm back up, how many units do you have now? Total of what you're sitting on now before you add anything else?
I think they're right, they have between 175 and 200.
170?
Some were, I don't know.
Okay, on acre and a half, acre, three or whatever, and you want to go down and do three more acres, so you could put realistically three, four, 100 units down there on that grid, correct?
That's right, but that's probably going the same entrance now. Yeah, and I understand where you're going.
If I understood what Craig said right there, then to access this property right here, you would access it all with this entrance, right near the beginning of?
Yes, sir. I have contemplated a drive that goes, goes on to the, parallels the north side of that existing building, and goes between the proposed structure and that building.
Down this way?
That's right.
Okay.
And that building is 50 by 145.
The front, the front building?
The proposed building is 50 by 145. Those existing buildings, 3,000 square feet, those are about 30 by...
One thing, Mr. Sherrill, I want to beg to differ with you, we have, everybody's got an opinion. I understand your comment about how the zoning request is not affected by the, by the roadway. I understand what you're saying, but...
By property limits.
But in today's world, you know, this property probably wouldn't have been allowed to be subdivided for a commercial purpose without a commercial-approved driveway under today's, if it was brand new, had the whole thing was done residential. So I'm just looking ahead here, where is this going? So to me, it is somewhat pertinent where we're going with the project. So having said that, I'm going to put my questions and my comments. Why don't we do this? Gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion, and I'll give the opportunity for anyone who is in support or in opposition, and then we'll come back and ask Mr. Byrd and Mr. Sherrill additional questions after that, and you guys are fine with that. All right. Okay, at this time, I want to open the floor up for those who are here in support or, or in opposition, if you will, of the application. First off, open up the floor, is there anyone here in support of the application? I'll issue three calls, as we have a standard procedure that we do here in the county, so... If you raise your hand, I'll get to you, state your name and address. Second call for those in support. All right, third call. All right, Ms. Shannon, if you'll mark that we had no one make any comments in support of the application, and that's not negative or positive, I don't want anyone to think that, we just have a certain program and criteria we have to go through this. Now I'll open the floor up for those in opposition of the application. If you raise your hand, come to the podium, get your name and address, and come on down.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board. Steve Cannon, represent my dad, Pat Cannon, 121 Cannon Road. We are in opposition of the request, and no fault of Mr. Byrd's. We want to recognize that we're not opposed to economic development. We want the county to grow and prosper. We also want everybody to, you know, have good luck when they get into business. But unfortunately, this is one of the classic syndromes that you find from a foreclosure. Now, that's not my fault, that's not Mr. Byrd's fault, and it sure as heck is not your fault. And I think Mr. Bryant has already recognized a number of issues with this effort. First and foremost, I want to go ahead and put on the record that we are in great disagreement of this so-called property line arrangement. At the time that was done, a gentleman who previously owned that property did that as a divorce sale, and that's not to say anything good or bad about that, but it was without our knowledge. We did file affidavits with the courts that recognizes our deed, and we recognized that that was a disputed line. That is not a public road, it has not ever been a public road, and my dad has maintained that road since 1956. He's 87 years old, and has owned that property for the majority of his life. The housing that he talks about right next door was my grandparents'. So we are entrenched, and hopefully we'll see the Centennial Farm before too long. It was a very agrarian area. My cousin owns the property next door to that, so do my uncles. So this is not about something that we take lightly. Unfortunately, I call it creep. Mr. Bryant, I think, recognized it. This should have never happened. Unfortunately, it did, so trying to justify going from one classification of the zoning to another classification just so somebody can build a building violates all norms of planning that I know about. In fact, if I go back to the 1928 Standard City Planning Act, I can't find any reason why one would do this. When we talk about not being a nuisance, I fully disagree, because that's what this act was established for. 1928, people saw that there would be nuisances with land use. So in that light, I wanted to go ahead and get that out there. Some of the other issues, clearly in the county's own C1, it clearly says that no structure in the community district shall exceed 20,000 square feet. It also talks about the C2 zoning being more for original development. And if I look at the land use plan and the future land use plan, it talks about being a C1 district. It never talks about being a C2. So it would, it would in itself violate the county's own standard of what the future would look like, which a C1 would support residential community, and that's exactly what we see that area as. Unfortunately, that area, and I don't understand it, is just fraught with all kinds of problems when it comes to zoning. One of the other areas we have, kind of, is a property owner concern. The house that you're talking about on the 3.0 number one, although it's a C1 property, he's only paying tax for residential structure. So if we keep going down this road, we got to, we got to stop somewhere, and that is what we are looking for you to do, is to do what was already there. I think we already see that there's no DOT, D cell lane, there's not an approved driveway. I don't even think DOT would approve one. I could be wrong. I know that if we were to give him a building permit, he could not meet the setbacks. We've already heard our own planning professional tell us that there's not enough room to meet 65-foot setback for a public road. If we look at the site, to even try to get site balance, is if you go out there and look at the property, which I think you have, you'll find that as you approach into that house property, the larger 3.6 tract, you'll see that if you try to get, it would take just millions and millions of cubic yards of dirt to be moved, then we, as a, as a property owner, would be faced with a huge vertical wall, almost a cliff, adjoining Mr. Thomas. I mean, we walk out, we get to see that every day. We talked about traffic going up and down that road. I think that's a great observation. It's only going to get worse. Even today, as we came over here, there were several emptying of the little units. All that trash and debris comes right out of that truck as they leave. We routinely get to pick that up. So again, I respect Mr. Byrd, he's a very nice person, he's a good neighbor, but at the same time, I've got to protect my dad and his property, and my future inheritance and the, and the community. And I think, I think from what I'm hearing, I think that's probably the biggest observation I've seen. So we are in oppose of the request.
Mr. Cannon, gentlemen, do you have any comments or questions, Mr. Cannon? Mr. Cannon, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment in opposition to the application? All right, last call. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Okay. All right. All right. Ms. Shannon, if you'll note, we'll close the opposition portion of the public hearing. All right. Before I adjourn this part of our meeting, any comments that you guys would like to make before we go into the call meeting?
I've got a question on this back 3.5 acre. Is the only way you can get to it is off of this easement? Is that the only way you can get to that 3.0? Is that the only way you can get to that 3.0?
Yes.
And what is it, Harry, this might be for you, is it, you say it's residential now, correct? This back 3.5?
The back lot is still also C1.
Still residential.
They're both C1.
They're both still C1?
They're both C1. Now, there's a house structure there, but they're both C1.
So you can let it back? Look, hey. So this, who lives there?
I don't know who lives there, but that's the residential structure on 3.8.
But that's the one, right? These are C1, and is this back a part of this track?
Yes, sir, this is one.
Oh, okay, only one track, and you say that's C1?
Absolutely.
And this is C1?
Yes, and I got a note on it.
Okay.
Harry, to this, before, I know you got to believe and understand that. Just to kind of reemphasize again, the reasoning behind, and I'm not, if I say this, don't take this personally, but advising Mr. Bird, instead of applying for one track, combining it into one track, because that's his long-term plans now, is what I'm hearing. Pros, cons, educate me, help me understand why we wouldn't have. I'm just curious.
Why we wouldn't have?
I didn't want track. Combine the two, if it had surveyed together.
Well, um...
I understand it's two separate tracks now, I understand that, but I'm just curious. Does our land use plan allow, and is that more administratively, Mr. Melvin?
That's an administrative process to combine.
But it can be done?
It can be done, yes. But since it was two separate, I think I could probably answer this, since it was two separate tracks. I guess Mr. Bird had any interest in combining them at the time. He simply applied, had both of them.
If it's two tracks, we feel like under our regulation that you need two applications because they're two tracks. I mean, I couldn't have one application for both tracks because I've got separate, I have separate parcel numbers, I have separate acreage, and access to actually, I'm funded for those. So, again, we do combinations all the time in our office as far as joining tracks together, you know, track A to track B, probably that administratively, as long as we meet the criteria.
My question is, back to the planning board, to keep me from having to read this again. You said the planning board approved or not of it?
They recommended, they recommended both commissioners consider approval for the 1.802805.
Which is the track that currently has the mini store.
Community commercial to a C2 highway business district. They did not recommend for the 3.506 acre.
See, we have a list of their reasoning as to why they did not approve that.
I got everything they said actually was mine.
I spoke to the chairman, and he indicated to me that the reason that they did not recommend the back law, the three-and-a-half acre track, is because it didn't have grid coverage. That was one of the primary reasons.
Mr. Sherrill, Mr. Bird, was that shared with you guys at the meeting? During the meeting, the reason behind the denial on the second track, back track?
No, sir.
That's something we need to make sure we do, that our planning board, when they do, turn someone down during the meeting, try to give an explanation as to why that decision was made.
Chairman told me he did relay that to you. So it should show up in the man select meeting?
I didn't see it.
The reason maybe that they recommended a C2 is because they wouldn't have been able to build these units without it being a C2?
Under C1, under C1, community commercial, Mr. Bird would not be able to meet the setback on the square foot requirements to do it as a conditional use permit under C1. It is allowed as a conditional use permit, but he couldn't meet the building setback, nor could he meet the building's square foot requirement as far as...
So there would have been some barriers to it as far as some more downwind?
Yeah, I would, thanks on Mr. Nixon's act.
So this should have maybe been picked up as a C2 to start with, is that your thought?
That's what it is now, it probably should have been picked up as a C2.
Okay, it was picked up as a C1 in the beginning.
C1 is doing a tax records, basically.
Correct. And because it was, it's been there 15, 20 years, it was operating technically as a C2.
That's correct.
Before Mr. Bird purchased it.
The C2 was a, it's existing use to, you know, to, existing use prior to the first 2015.
All right. Mr. Cannon, just a clarification, the 3.506 acre, was that previously in the family? Is that where you said your grandmother's?
No, sir, she, they live just...
Beyond that?
Yeah, just to the left.
You know, frame residence now, so there's no couple at one town.
That frame reference, the home that we're talking about, used to belong to Julian Westmoreland.
That's the brick house?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, up on the hill?
Uh-huh.
All right. And how, how many days a week is someone in residence there at your house there on Cannon?
I think Dad's there at least three days a week, if not more. He has health issues, so he comes down and spends time with me when he needs to go to the doctor.
Once they get you going, they keep you going, I think. That has nothing to do with his confidence. Okay. Anything else, guys? All right. All right, well, I hereby adjourn the public hearing relating to this request. All right? Ms. Shanda, you ready for the second one? All right. Take a deep breath. All right. Now, call this next meeting order, this is a combined work session and call meeting for White County Board of Commissioners, today being Monday, September the 25th, at 5:06. So, all right, call the meeting order. Again, this is a called meeting and combined work session. Gentlemen, on our item here, and I hate to be redundant, but we have, we consider the following action. Number one, application filed by Mr. Bird, redistrict property located 36 Cannon Road, from a C1 to a C2 highway business district, total acreage to be changed, 3.506 acres, tax parcel 076-130. And then we do have, and let me ask Ms. Shanda, does this action, do I need to take these one at a time, or, because that's the way it was...
Separate applications.
All right. All right, gentlemen, we've heard, we've heard the application, applicant, we have heard his desire to rezone to a C2. We have heard from the Cannon family on their wishes, the property not be rezoned to a C2. I'm, right now, I'm focusing on the track, the 3.506 acre track. Gentlemen, we've got a few options here, we can either approve, deny, or if you choose to table, or ask for additional information. And just, given 3.506 acres is the back track, which has the brick house on it, that's, that's how I keep up with, that's the brick house.
Yes, sir.
These are, these are never easy.
Oh, I know what they're not.
I'm just looking, I mean, there's good points made on both sides. The planning commissioner recommended that we not approve the 3.506 acres, I think I would like to make a motion that we don't approve that. Cane to be changed from C1 to C2.
On the back, the back one?
Yes.
The brick house, yes. Okay, I have a motion, my Commissioner Hockum, to deny the application on 3.506 acres from a C1 to go into a C2. Is there a second? Mr. Bryant's second. All right, we're now officially in a vote section here on the 3.506 acres. Any comments or discussion with the board? All right. This is the back half again, this is the part where it furthers away, and I keep, I'm not being redundant, but I will make sure that we have an understanding of what we're voting on. This is the back half, this is not the front half, that touches directly, they can read through. I have a motion to deny the request to rezone from C1 to C2, Commissioner Hockum, Commissioner Bryant. Those in favor of the denial, signify by saying a "aye". Those opposed, say "no". Motion carries. 3.506 acre, move from C1 to C2, denied. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure on the first, the front parcel, which is the 1.820 acres, to go from C1 to C2? And this is the, this is the track that has the mini stores located already there on?
I'm against the motion to re-approve C2.
So Commissioner Goodyer, motion to approve to a C2. Commissioner Hockum's second, want to a C2. And discussion with the board? All right, I have none. All in favor of the motion to move from C1 to a C2, commercial, commercial highway business district, signify by saying a "aye".
Aye.
Opposed, say "no". All right, the, the approval by the Board of Commissioners is to approve the front section of 1.82 acres to go from a C1 to a C2. The second back parcel, denied, denial by the Board of Commissioners, to go from C1 to C2. All right. That's where that stands. Any, I'm just going to be direct, any, if you have any comments or concerns on any appeal process, feel free to contact Mr. Melvin directly, and he can walk you through any procedures. Item three, consider the request paid by the Northeast Georgia Veteran Society to fund a regular statute. We received notification from the, this particular applicant to withdraw the request today. Is that correct, Mr. Melvin?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, moving on to item four. Consider the application for the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant as JAG through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, for the funding of the multi-jurisdictional drug task force for which White County serves as the physical agent, and the 2018 memorandum of understanding for the operation of the Appalachian Regional Drug Enforcement Office, RDO. And Commander Posey, you've got the hill.
Thanks, sir. As you just said, we're asking to your permission to submit the grant paperwork again, the grant figure this year, since we combined efforts with another task force out of Franklin County, is $446,121, that's about $87,000 increase from last year. So that's, that's more money that's coming to our area to continue our unified effort to afford drug enforcement. We are now up to 21 personnel within our office, two of those being administrative, everyone else being of a law enforcement nature. Again, this is a state and local multi-jurisdictional drug task force that combats drugs, White County, Lunkin County, Towns County, Banks County, Abersham, Stevens, Reagan, Franklin County.
Gentlemen, we've done this for quite a few years, I think we're all very familiar with the process, and the good work that RDO does, and you guys have, your staff has done a phenomenal job, Commander Posey, especially this year, getting large, large quantity of drugs off the street, and I want to encourage that. I mean, you guys are the, you're on the front lines, you know, we're on this side of the desk, but you guys are on the street, we appreciate it. Gentlemen, I'm not going to prolong this, do I have a motion to approve the application for the 2018 JAG grant, as well as a memorandum of understanding for the operation of Appalachian Drug Task Force Office?
Second.
Mr. Bryant, first, Commissioner Nick, second.
Congratulations, this last one was a big hit. I know you knocked a hole in their, in their money pot this last time, so congratulations on what y'all were doing, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Fire's in this county, appreciate it, and I'm sure they do in the other counties. Go get them.
Hey, 10 seconds, for those who don't know what, what transpired. If you can, with what parts you can. Yeah.
The real short version is, is we, we got on an organization that was distributing large amounts of methamphetamine, they were bringing in the methamphetamine oil and 55-gallon drums, we're still looking into exactly how they were doing that, and then what we found were the conversion labs. Conversion lab just takes, takes it from an old form, because it's easier to transport to liquid. You can hide, if you can have, you can have this liquid in the diesel tank of, of the tractor trailers, they can actually drive with methamphetamine in the, in the tanks. They just know when to stop and review it, and it separates itself out. And that's why it's easier to hide and bring it to our country. And then through the conversion process, they turn it into the crystallized form, which is what we see every day on the, on the streets, that's what's sold on the streets. And, and we found two different labs, one in Union County, one in Lunkin County, along with 30 kilograms of the finished methamphetamine product. And we, you know, believe they probably produced somewhere close to 400 gallons of methamphetamine oil, which equates about to, I mean, conservatively speaking, that equates to about 350 kilograms of methamphetamine. So, understand that, that was not drugs that were just meant for Northern Georgia, that was drugs meant for the Southeast. So it was, it was a very, very, a good win for, for the good guys on that particular day.
Absolutely, thank you. All right. I got a first and second, those who signify by saying approval, signify by saying a "aye", opposed say "no". Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
And for those who don't know, that office is based here in White County with about three miles from where we're sitting at. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item five, consider a response submitted to the request qualifications, an RFQ, for broker services for the employee, employee benefit program. That's item five, and who has to get on that?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the board has staff, we're putting out an RFQ for broker services for insurance broker, which we did, and we received back four, four different RFQs back from four different groups, and we subsequently scored them, each of them on six different criteria, which you have in your book. We went through that process, the finance staff, the HR staff, did that scoring, and the final results, MSI Benefits Group scored the highest out of all, all four different brokers. We have the scores in front of you. Your decision on our... Decision on how, how you want to report with that.
Okay, we had four brokers represented, and not in any particular order, MSI benefits, Chastain Insurance Agency, Epic Insurance Brokers and Consultants, and Shaw?
Hankins.
Hankins? I was going to say Harpkins, but it's Hankins, okay. And the information I have in my packet, MSI, as you just referred to, Mr. Melton, graded out, this panel is graded as out, is that correct, a three-panel, employee panel?
Three, three-person employee panel, yes.
Graded 245. Before I ask for a, a direction from the board, where we're going with this, all this is open, this is open records here, I know we have representatives from the agencies here, this information will be made available to you, give them a chance, and she can get you copies of everything. All right, gentlemen, y'all have the same information I'm looking at. What's your pleasure?
We continue to use MSI benefits for broker service.
I have a motion, Commissioner Goodyer, second, Commissioner Dick, to award contract for broker services, MSI discussion. I do want to make a point of interest, we did have one local, that's Chastain Agency, broker services, who did fill out the package, I'll make records to that, and in the, and I meant to ask this earlier, and I apologize to staff, but was, which particular category, was anything given to being a local provider?
That was not in, that was not in the criteria.
All right, okay. Closed discussion, I have a motion to approve MSI, employee benefits program, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. MSI is awarded, I will say, I'll thank you to all the companies who did submit, submit bids, and Miss Shanda will give copies of the stuff, so you'll know what you're dealing with. That's just business, business, so you'll get a copy of it and know how to compare yourselves going forward, so, all right, thank you. Item six, welcome introduction, Mr. John Sell, who's our new Director of Community and Economic Development. John, at this time, you're supposed to stand up, get your wallet out, and just hand it out, and we're supposed to go through your wallet, right? John, I may be still in the thunder mic, but, John, we're excited that you've come aboard with us, looking forward to your experience, especially from the Georgia Power days, from economic development and customer service, how that's going to benefit our citizens in White County, and hopefully just let, you know, John started the, the Monday after the storm, and
Right, I think so.
He came back Tuesday. So, I, I hope that means something, so, you know, John, anything you'd like to say? Not putting on a spud or anything, but we don't buy yet.
We got you broke in, yeah.
We, we want to make sure we got you in for it.
My name is John Sell, I'm pleased to be here, I thank the board for the opportunity to come work and serve the citizens of White County. Like you mentioned, I spent 19 years with Georgia Power, and I look forward to bringing that experience and help for the citizens of White County.
All right, and if anyone there in the audience, if you have any time on planning economic development, any questions, you know, as John getting to speak with, with our, with our county, our organizations, you know, we'll give you a little bit of grace, a few days, and, but look forward to, we've hit the ground running on several projects already, and glad to have you onboard.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your wife, as well coming too, look forward to meeting her as well.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item seven, Mr. Kevin Handby, SPOS manager, present a monthly SPOS status report.
Mr. Chairman, I know y'all have a pretty lengthy attendance, so we'll kind of go through this thing really quickly. As you can see, this is through the, this is through the actual August check, the September check should be coming in next couple of days, so we're about, getting, getting close to halfway with the program. Projections still look really good, and the help of the program looks really good as well. Again, this includes all of the items that the board has encumbered to date, and as you can see, the account balances are healthy. The last month's check of over $400,000 was a very good addition to the help of the program.
We're going to speak live over the next, but two weeks, going to be more.
We'll know in a couple of days, that's for certain, but if we keep on tracking like, like we're going with everything the board's approved, total SPOS available by the end of the year is over $1.1 million. So again, the help of the program, with all that you're doing, and everything that's going on, everything looks to be in really good shape.
The original SPOS right now was for, for 19 million, the estimated 22 million, but the, of the original amount, how much of that was the county's portion?
Estimated, the 19 million, it would have been 74% of the 19. So you get 13%. Ballpark activity here, please.
74?
74% of 19 million would be
14 million, $60,000.
There you go.
14 million?
14 million, 60.
Yeah, 13% goes to Allen, 13% goes to Cleveland.
So.
Our offices look to see, so we would be about
Two million above.
Two million above our estimate.
That's, yeah, that's, we still hit 300, that's, we hit 300,000 a month, that's the program.
We hope we do.
Well, you know, it's good to be conservative with projection, but
No, no, we're not going to blow it. No, 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 we don't, we don't have that track record here, but you can't spend more than you got, have it in, this is basic math, so.
That's it, I'm under promising over.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Handby? All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I could put in that 1.1 million at the end of the year, is that, is that after all the other projects, or?
That's after, yes.
Okay, and that's what, everything that the board has approved today?
Today.
Okay, taken off.
Is, is paid for. So, and we hope to have that net.
Yeah.
And the sheriff's not here, and Deputy Taylor, do not go tote this to him, but as long as we get the sheriff and Director Murphy out of our pockets, we'll be okay in a couple of weeks.
No home patrol cars the rest of the year.
At the end of that, we hope, don't get no deers. Yeah, as soon as we say that, we'll get a dozen, but anyway, sorry, get off the track here. Kevin, thanks.
Any more questions?
Hey, go dogs.
See y'all later.
See you. Speaking to the sheriff, Sheriff Walden, something's come up, he's not going to be able to be here with us this season, so item eight will be postponed to a later date. Item nine, consider the final lease purchase documents with BBNT, 2017, Kenworth T800 4,000 gallon bumper tanker approved for purchase by the board in October of 2016. That was a financing terms of three years, a 2.36 interest rate, of which we borrowed $251,000, $40,000 even on the principal, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, this is, as you just mentioned, the board approved this back in October of last year, and we're just finalizing the, the lease purchase documents now, so we just need the board's approval to approve that, approve that, and have you sign, sign those documents.
Before I ask for a motion, Commissioner Bryant's going to be excusing himself because of a print shield.
I didn't get voted on his last year, someone's got style in this, but
Okay, with the seller, correct?
Correct.
All right. All right, okay.
So is this the one we just got the other day? Is this the end of the thing we just got?
Yes, it's the one that's out there.
So, after our meeting, if you'll go up there and look at the little red wagon, we've got one up there, so, it's a big old red wagon. Guys, I'll keep it short, sweet, and simple, we, I need a motion to approve the final lease purchase documents, do I have a motion?
Someone.
Commissioner Nick's first.
Awesome.
Commissioner Hawkins, second. Any discussion? All right, have none, all in favor of the approval, signal by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Again, Commissioner Bryant, excuse himself from that vote. All right, item 10, consider quotes received for the replacement of information, technology equipment, IT equipment, item 10, or tab 10, or Robert, you got the hill?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm telling you, this is a request to replace some aging servers that we have, our primary servers in our data center, with some newer equipment, and I have three quotes before you. And that kind of, kind of sums it up a little bit.
Well, it does, and when I, and for the record, we have three bids, the low bid being Starwind, $40,350. Then we have H, excuse me, next is Dell, $78,395.48. The next is HP Enterprise, $135,032.96. The Starwind is built by using Dell, and
It is, and Dell is also Dell, and there are similar pieces of equipment, similarly sized, doing the same task. Much of that cost is specialized proprietary software they use. These are two devices that operate as one for redundancy and safety, so that specialized piece of software that mirrors those is where the big expense is. HP is very proud of theirs. Dell has an acquisition of a company called Nutanix, which utilizes theirs, and Starwind produces their own software, utilizing very similar pieces of hardware. So, it's, it's quite a tremendous difference in cost, and I think that
It's not a little bit, $100,000 of investment.
It is tremendous. HP is new in this field, and they're charging a premium. The Nutanix product that Dell is marketing has been in the market for some time, but still very costly, it's an upper-end product. Starwind is very inexpensive, they're using the same Dell hardware, like I said, and they actually are a better performing product, with better expandability, and they're new in the market, fairly new, last couple of years, you have very good reviews, and the cost is just, is awesome in comparison with the other vendors or offerings.
Was this supposed to do that, was this on the document earlier?
It was. Squash, you remember we took everything?
This was under the SPOS budget.
Yes, we did add that to the, to the SPOS budget.
We had budget for it, I'm saying it wasn't put down here on file.
Not SPOS.
Where'd the Kevin go? Here we were, probably going to net out one million, here we're going to, excuse me, again.
They didn't put me up there.
He just got his $300,000.
You got his little red wagon.
I'm on my own, all on my own, yes.
Robert, in, in the past, and this is not directed towards you or your department, I know in other departments, we've gotten, technology's changing so fast, I mean, what we buy today is out, it's already, by the time it hits our ground, it's out of date. How long's Starwind been in business?
Several years.
Okay.
How many years you see this last one? Do you have a date, something, though?
Generally, we're on a five-year replacement cycle for this type of equipment. We've outgrown what we currently have, we have a, a piece of, what they call storage, it's pretty much our big bunch of hard drives, and we've outgrown that, and that's what we need to replace, and for me to go and replace that existing unit from Dell would cost just as much as this entire device or appliances, it costs.
Will our, will staff see a, just in daily computer usage of the server, will it be faster?
You'll see a significant improvement in performance, as well as a safety factor for us, because it's, it's two mirrored units, so there's redundancy, if we lose one, not even pick up. The current system we have is similar, but if we lose one, I have to just manually spin up the secondary, so it almost requires a body on site. An interesting point that they have, that Starwind has, is they've now started offering proactive support, this is a new feature, meaning that they're monitoring this equipment 24/7, like some of our other vendors did, the others don't do that, I like that feature very much. They tell me when it's going to break before I come in and want to even find it broken.
They charge a yearly license fee like all the others that
They do not, this one has a three-year support agreement, with that monitoring thrown in, the others charge a licensing or a maintenance fee each and every year.
Which saved money all the way around on this one.
We are.
So we're really not spending $40,000, is that what you're saying?
I've looked at some other options, trying to get something less costly.
Right.
I'm going to throw out an example, that's cloud computing, over this last storm, we saw just how affected that was. I'm a little afraid of that, plus the cost is about three times higher to host our services in the cloud than it is to host them on-site.
Yeah, okay, I can make some comment, I think we're all, this storm caught all our attentions, especially when our, when our broadband or fiber went down, and we had no internet capabilities for four days, five days?
Yeah, four days. Yeah, we were able to get our services on campus up, but our external connections to the world were affected, so we were still able to do our internal processing, our financial functions, other functions. Had we been in the cloud, we'd have no functions at this time, with that type of, of an incident.
The equipment you're about here, what happens to the old equipment?
The old equipment that we have, I'm going to refresh, clean it up, set it aside in one of our other facilities, and send replicas to it, so should we lose a building, to flood or lost roof, or some other type of damage, we can spin our systems back up again, and I'm going to keep those in service as satellites.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'll keep it short, sweet, and simple, I have a motion to approve the low bid of Starwind, $40,350, at a SPOS.
We all have Starwind.
Very interesting conversation.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Hawkins, first.
Second.
Commissioner Goodyer, second. Any discussion? Have none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And, now, just make a question, none of that money paid for a wedding this weekend, did you? Now, if Robert did get married, his, his daughter did. Let me bring this back in here.
That was a lot of fun.
All right, all right. Okay, item 11, consider a lease with power space at White County's Long Mountain Tower site with WRWH. We have a contract in our packet for services, public service announcements, and community announcements as well, WRWH is going to continue to make those as they have done historically, in place of transmitting transmitter on our Long Mountain Tower site. Mr. Melton, am I describing this in a correct manner?
Yes, sir.
All right. The lease
I was going to revise, did
Yeah. Yes, and Mr. Dyer, going for the agreement, feels like it meets criteria, two-year agreement, $1,000, and
We appreciate it.
We appreciate what you guys do, none of you, the media as a whole, especially in our public service announcement, Al, especially two weeks ago, you were, you guys were our lifeline.
This will only be able, enable us to be able to serve the county, White County in particular, better, and get that information out.
Well, thank you.
Once we receive, you know, we got the application for the FCC right now for the translator, I'd ask you a quick question.
What, what number are you going to be on FM dial?
Be 93.9.
93.9, WRWH.
It will be, just basically a replication or rebroadcast of the AM station.
He just picks it up and shoots the same thing out. So Craigel here, can I watch the main?
No, I can't hear, I have to go to the house. I'm on the east side over, so
Thank you, I'm able to hear it. Motion to approve the contract with WRWH. Commissioner Bryant, first.
Sir.
Mr. Goode your second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, say no, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consider agenda, uh, excuse me, consider addendum number one to the fiscal year two thousand eighteen contract with Legacy Lane, the nutrition program services in the White County Senior Center, uh, that's going to be item twelve, your packet, um, I'm just curious how, I mean, it's good, but how did it go down?
Mr. Chairman, this is federal government, we get two or three or four, five of these a year, and they continually change the numbers on us, but it's not significant. It's, it's a little bit of an increase for us, but nothing significant.
Actually, it went down.
Well, one of them.
Yeah, they're, what they pay us went down, what we have to pay to match went up.
It is every year, you can tell Bonnie comes in, it's every year.
Well, we have a great senior center program, uh, Ms. Bonnie, her staff, and, uh, Arnold and Becky, I think you guys would sing the accolade, senior center, and the, it's a ministry over there, um, that you guys participate in. I'll keep it short, sweet, and simple, do I have most approve the addendum to the Legacy Lane contract?
Someone.
Commissioner Nix first.
Correct.
Mr. Bryant second, beginning discussion, have none, all in favor, signal if I say aye. Aye opposed, say no, say no.
It was a nine seven thousand dollar...
No. Um, item thirteen, consider bid received, two certificates of deposits, it's receiveds, currently had at Mountain Valley Community Bank, they have maturity dates of November sixth, two thousand seventeen, um, uh, two CDs, the first CD, uh, in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred dollars, uh, the second CD, value thirty-three thousand, two hundred even, um, we received two bids, uh, from two of our local banks, one being United Community Bank, the other being Mountain Valley Community Bank, uh, the high bid on the CDs, uh, just hold on to these seats here, uh, is a point four-three of a percent, uh, that's less than half a percent, but that's the high bid, uh, Mountain Valley came in at point four-two, one of a percent, so, uh, I would presume recommendation, we go to the high bid, the United Community Bank, uh, a point four-three percent on both certificates of deposits, and can I assume that's the recommendation of staff?
Remember, one time it was point zero zero one there.
So far.
You know, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, we could make twenty-seven hundred dollars.
We all have paperwork signed off the January.
Yeah, uh, motion to approve, United.
So.
Mr. Hoffman first.
Second.
Mr. Goode your second, all in favor, signal if I say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
You say no?
I said no, I ain't supporting this kind of law.
Okay, that's hard to guess all over, we're all over the place again, okay. Alright, those in favor, going to United Community Bank, signify by say aye. Aye, that's three, those opposed, say no.
No.
Alright, two, motion carries, three to two.
Who was the two, like, I'm trying to get...
The two that, the two that won't talk too loud.
It was Emerson.
I hope they ask me fine the next time I'm in the bank.
Um, well, for, let me say this, opposed...
Something along those.
Um, let me, the county does reserve the right with our local, with our, uh, deposits, number one, our funds have to be, uh, collateral backed, and, those who are not familiar with banking, that means, uh, we have additional, uh, backing of our deposits at the bank, but also, secondly, uh, the county reserves the right, we can withdraw our funds with no penalty, uh, if rates were to shoot through the roof, but we're not expecting that to happen, so we do have the ability to pull those funds and go find a higher rate, if one ever does exhibit, so, that's, that's outside of it. Are those funds for the solid waste, do we know?
I do not believe so, I will confirm it and let you know.
That's how you shoot me an email.
I believe.
Item fourteen, consider appointing White County's voting delegate for the two thousand seventeen ACCG Legislative Leadership Conference, um, I know I will be attending, you all will be attending that this year.
I'm going.
You're going. And that's going to be on, uh, that vote's going to be on Thursday, and so...
Thursday, October, I want to tell them twelve, is it?
So...
What day is that?
That's on Thursday, the, uh...
October, uh... I don't know, I have books.
I can see, it's second, that's not, I'm going to be there.
I don't got mine on...
Twelve.
I'll make the motion, Sheriff attorney, if that's right.
Mr. Bryant first, Mr. Hoffman second. I'm below that. No, go ahead, anyway, moving up here, uh, the...
Is that before, buddy?
Those in favor of the Chair carrying the proxy, signal if I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, alright, motion carries. Item fifteen, uh, folks, we told you we had a long meeting tonight, so, uh, consider the second set of the year-end, two thousand seventeen budget amendments, um, item fifteen. Uh, Ms. Vicki, you want to elaborate, these are items we approved during the last fiscal year, and we, we finance out of contingency growth.
Some of these are coming out of contingency, and some of them are affecting capital outlay, which, uh, both of us, for those accounts require your approval to make amendments on those. Some of them were actually approved in the meetings at the time, but some of them were not, so this is basically covering ourselves on those required approvals.
Wonder what this, uh, leaves our contingency from then, what, what does this leave our contingency from last year, from new year of this meeting?
So far, the amendments have brought it down to ninety-two thousand.
Four hundred.
Keep in mind, be you...
Yeah.
Um, one question I, I had was on page two, uh, the professional services, Carter Slue, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars even, um, it said, uh, Carter Slue expense at Freedom Park, Walton, you recall what that was?
I know part of it has to do with, and I remember part of it has to do with facilities for that, but, no, it's not that full amount, so I can look back and see exactly what that was.
That has been a while, if that's what it was, that, that has been a while.
The monument?
Yes.
Some of the monuments being moved, yes.
Wow.
That was fun.
Where's in your bag?
Quite a long time.
Okay, alright. Yep, alright, gentlemen, you have those amendments set forth before you, um, those in favor of amendments set, uh, as presented, uh, I need a motion, motion to approve.
Comment, motion to approve, changes to the budget.
Commissioner Goode your first. Commissioner Bryant second, beginning of discussion.
I'm on my own.
I bet we're down.
I was on closed discussion, all in favor, signal if I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, alright, motion carries. Ms. Shanda, um, I don't see anything that we're going to be carrying over from this week to next week.
What's the...
Sheriff's.
I, I know y'all have talked about, um, table and road discussion.
Yes.
Is that for October second? Um, then we would have the Sheriff's information...
Sheriff's.
Um, for the courthouse.
Sheriff's will be next week's session.
And the other thing we would have a minute is in finance report.
Some do not have the October second.
I don't see what they have, I don't believe it.
Mr. Hoffman, having a feel?
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Shanda, uh, cancel the October second.
If we do, be prepared, I'll, uh, do a special call meeting before then, if we need
to, advance notice, um, but otherwise, we'll be back here the last Monday of the month, work session, and we'll decide if we do a combined work session, call meeting, if there's anything else comes up. Um, before we exit of this meeting, um, uh, when do, when does staff recommend that we, uh, let the state of emergency expire that's still technically enforced from the storm? No, you can't have no money now.
Mr. Chairman, I expect that after tomorrow, when we look at the debris removal plan and the contracts, or the RFPs that came into date on debris removal, once that decision is finalized, hopefully tomorrow, we can lift that state of emergency.
Okay, alright, okay, anything else, all hearts, minds, ears clear?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Nix first.
Second.
Mr. Goode your second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.